Call the May 5th City Council meeting to order. We have Commissioner Smith is going to give us the invocation, pledge, and fact of the day.
Let us assume that we have to pray. Most prayers in our God our Father, we thank you now for this opportunity to come once again to take advantage of this city council. We ask you to continue to guide us in your blessings upon all that we shall say and do. It will be pleasing and acceptable at your side. Bless these our Father, the residents of this community. We pray in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the fact of the day. On May 8th, 1945, both the United States and Great Britain celebrate Victory in Europe Day, which has become known as VE Day. Cities in both nations, as well as formerly occupied cities in Western Europe, put our flags and banners rejoicing in defeat of the Nazis during World War II as Allied forces formally accepted Nazi Germany's unconditional surrender after nearly six years of war. Fact of the day.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we've got two sets of minutes. We've got the Rock Springs Ridge Community Meeting Minutes, as well as the last regular city council meetings. Any changes? If not, look for a motion to approve. So moved. We've got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Edward, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
All right, next up, Chief Wileham, come on down. Presentation on Air Methods helicopter service.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Sean Wileham, Fire Chief of Popka Fire Department. Today, we'd like to present an opportunity to bring a resource that will exponentially increase our public safety in our city in regards to emergency medicine by providing additional access to critical care in our community. As you probably can guess by the picture on your screen and the two gentlemen in the back dressed in red jumpsuits, we're here to talk about relocating air care helicopter here to Popka. With me, I have several subject matter experts as partners to answer any of the questions. We have Mr. Rick Clow, who's the Vice President of Customer Experience with Air Methods. We have Mike Tellento, he's the Chief Flight Medic with Orlando Health. Also with him is Ty Campbell, another flight medic, and our Division Chief of EMS, Will Sanchez. Also with us is Elizabeth Watkins, who's the Local Government Affairs Manager for Orlando Health. So they're back for questions afterwards. But what we want to talk about today is air care. What is air care? Air care is obviously the helicopter that responds to a number of different incidents. But basically, it's a partnership between Orlando Health and Air Methods to bring critical care transport via three helicopters to the central Florida region. It starts with Air Methods, which is a Denver-based company with over 400 helicopters, 440,000 safe takeoff and flight landings this year, and I'm sorry, last year in 2021, 64,000 patient transports around the country each year, and over 130 flight hours. So what we're going to get to in a little bit, and what I want to make sure that we understand is this resource doesn't respond unless we ask it to respond. And we're going to get into more detail of that in a little bit. The other side of the air care partnership is Orlando Health. And I'm pretty sure we're all very familiar with Orlando Health as it's the region's Level 1 Trauma Center, provides that care. And again, one thing you might not know is the deep roots that Orlando Health actually has in our community as well. There's over 782 team members who are residents of Popka who work for Orlando Health, two practices here as well. Orlando Health is also connected to our business via the Chamber of Commerce and active sponsor for many of our events. Again, together with Orlando Health and Air Methods, that brings us air care. The way this partnership works out is the Air Methods actually supplies the three helicopters and the pilots, whereas the medical expertise is actually provided by Orlando Health. So as you can see there, three Airbus EC-135 helicopters own and operated by Air Methods. Twin engines, they have many redundant systems, and again, a lot of those types of aircraft are designed for quieter operations. On the medical side, provided by Orlando Health, we have critical care paramedic and a critical care nurse that is actually assigned to each helicopter. I kind of want to break that down a little bit so you guys understand what a critical care paramedic is and what a critical care nurse is. Normal paramedics, when we go to school, it's about a year and a half to two years of schooling, starting with EMT, working your way up. Critical care paramedics have to have years of knowledge and ability in the field when they go for that next kind of training. These critical care medics get an additional 160 hours of training. They actually do additional 100 hours of CEUs every three years to maintain that credential. Critical care nurses, one being our normal level care in an ambulance is an EMT and a paramedic. With this resource, we're now actually adding a nurse. A nurse period is amazing, but a critical care nurse, just so you understand, again, two years of schooling, a minimum, to get your RN. On top of that, 1,750 hours of contact, direct patient contact with critically ill patients before they're even allowed to enter a critical care program. So as you can see, these professionals that are coming are highly skilled, highly trained personnel that comes in this helicopter. Together, they're able to provide life-saving treatment interventions at patient locations in their study that aren't set up in a helicopter. Also, what's important to note here is these helicopters are not just a quick ride, it's literally an ICU unit in the air. It's like an emergency department on scene. Also important to note, air care does a 50/50 split of scene and interfacility transports, meaning 50% of the time, they land for us 911-based emergencies. 50% of the time, they do interlocal, or I'm sorry, interfacility transports from hospital to hospital and things like that. So what does that look like for us on the scenes? These next few images, we're going to show some responses with serious incidents and how these expert pilots are able to navigate these situations when called on by us, our team, to address and take them safely to the hospital. So you can see, there's kind of an example of a scene there. We also know that our city is getting larger and larger, our infrastructure is growing, our roads, 441, 429, 451, 414, all high-speed traffic. Again, once the air care team arrives, one good thing that we are able to do there is supplement the work that the first responders are already performing. Again, if we have this partnership, we develop this training, they can actually take over patient care while our team's working on extricating the patient if necessary. Again, once a patient is received and onboarded by the air care team, they'll be quickly transported to the patient to the most beneficial facility, and we'll get to that in just a second. There's just a few more examples of some crashes we've dealt with. As you can see, that's right on 441, too, through the air care helicopters right there. So I kind of want to get a little more into, like I said, EMS protocol designated hospitals, because that sometimes is a misunderstanding of how our protocols work and what we are actually allowed to do and where we're supposed to transport to. So in situations where we would utilize this helicopter, three primary areas, trauma, stroke, and cardiac-related or heart attacks. Based on our protocol and what we're, we work on our medical director under Orange County, based on the severity of those patients, and we talk about criteria, certain criteria these patients meet, you'll hear the term "trauma alert," you'll hear the term "stroke alert," and you'll hear the term "cardiac alert." All those patients, when we deem them necessary, are actually have to be transported to a correct facility, either a PCI-capable facility for cardiac, which means a cath lab, a stroke-receiving facility for strokes, obviously, and that Level 1 or Level 2 Trauma Center for a trauma alert. Again, when they meet those criteria, that's where we have to transport to, and all those are outside the city. It's also, again, important to remember that once air care does take over patient care for us, it refreezes up one of our resources. Now we can keep one of our ambulances in our city to, again, better protect our city. Understand, the transport down to RMC, and we'll get to some of those times in a minute and some of that stuff, the turnaround time for that is usually hours by the time we get that resource back. So again, another benefit. Critical transport as itself provides advanced care, as you see there, critical care monitoring, advanced airway management, blood on all born aircraft, and we're going to get that specifically in a minute. But you have to understand that air care may have Orlando Health on its side, but it's very much like us, they're not exclusive to Orlando Health. So it depends on, again, where they need, that patient needs to go, where they're going to transport to. Again, this matters when we get into some of the comprehensive stroke centers and trauma centers we just discussed. When we talk about blood, and I kind of mentioned that before, in a trauma situation, when we are dealing with a trauma patient in the field, it is a true surgical emergency, and that's something we'll discuss a little bit further in a minute. But we have capabilities, our job basically is to stabilize and transport that patient to where they need to go. It's a true surgical emergency. Things we do, put them on backboards, control their airway, IV fluids. Our IV fluids that we carry, normal saline, basically is designed to treat that hemorrhagic shock, or if people are bleeding, just to control their blood pressure. What we don't have in our normal IV fluids is blood or blood products. What blood differs is it actually carries oxygen, as we know, throughout your body, those red blood cells. So when we're actually transporting from here to RMC, we have that normal saline that does not contain that hemoglobin, or that, I'm sorry, that, those red blood cells to carry that oxygen. So again, having this on this aircraft is amazing. It truly can save lives. Also, expanded medical medication stock to handle most emergencies. On our ambulances in Orange County, we carry about 20 medications. This unit with helicopter lands carries over 60, you know, so that's amazing. Specialized equipment, transport ventilator, IV pumps, standing orders through multiple disciplinary teams of medical doctors. There's a lot of advances with this, for sure. Another big question for everyone is why Popka? Why now? Well, currently, the aircraft that we're talking about moving out here resides in Longwood, where it was located almost 10 years ago. And at that time, Longwood was a, and still is a growing community, working on its infrastructure, but it's about, it was about 30 minutes-ish, and we talk about minutes because that's miles sometimes how we travel, but 30 minutes away from these specialty care facilities. At that time, that was where the helicopters needed. And Orlando Health and their air care team assesses these indicators about every five to 10 years of where they think this helicopter is going to be most useful. Again, that's why we're on our discussion today. Moving the helicopter here, we have our great access in our highways, we know that that's growing, continuously building infrastructure, but what separates us right now is time. That's our biggest hindrance we're seeing. Again, the first set you're going to see is our criteria, they're set for trauma, cardiac, and strokes. And these times are critical from the time of incident, that's important to remember, too. Not the time that we arrive on scene, but the time that injury actually occurs, that the stroke symptoms take place, or cardiac event takes place. So again, trauma, you'll see 60 minutes from injury to trauma center. That's the golden hour, the term you heard. And trauma is a time-sensitive disease, we call it. In fact, we were taught in school that the number one drug for trauma is diesel fuel. What does that mean? Stabilize them and get them going. That's exactly what we were taught. Again, it's a true surgical emergency. By the time we wanted to get to the patients on the ground where the injury happens to that surgeon is 60 minutes. Time is brain when it comes to strokes. About 1.9 million brain cells per minute are lost in an event of a stroke. That's significant. So you can see that time is critical here. To ask a cardiologist, time is muscle. From the time that an event takes place to how long it's taking us to get these patients to critical care is muscle. Next, you're going to see approximations where we're actually sitting right now. The closest Level 2 Trauma Center from, if something were to happen right now in City Hall, which is CFR out in Sanford, is 26 miles, 36 minutes. Again, that wouldn't be our facility we'd choose now, but that's from where we're sitting. To RMC, Level 1 Pediatric Trauma Center and Pediatric Trauma Center, 18 miles, about 27 minutes with no traffic. Comprehensive Stroke Center is about the same Florida south as actually, it's right around the corner from there. And again, the other big factors we have to remember are response times from us, extrication time if needed in traumatic situation, and traffic. We all know peak hours in the mornings, lunch rush hours, and coming home is getting longer and longer. You know, our average, our average response time in the city is four to eight minutes. So we're actually doing a little bit better on that side. And time is critical in emergency medicine. This next slide, story from Bailey's story, we call it, actually Orlando Health received permission to share this story, so we wanted to share it with you guys. One of, and some, you know, it's still talked about somewhat, but a little-known fact, the trauma is actually still the leading cause of individuals up to age 45. So from 1 to 45, still the leading cause of accidental death is trauma. When we think of strokes or heart attacks, or the need for critical care transport, especially the strokes and heart attacks, we tend to think more of our experienced members of our community, because I like to put, you know, the elderly. But when it comes to ages here, we can see that with trauma, it just simply doesn't matter. Bailey was 17 years old, he was traveling home from football practice. He doesn't remember flipping his vehicle twice or being ejected, but his mom remembers when she arrived on scene, and they were told by EMS on scene that they contacted air care and they were going to transport Bailey to the Level 1 Trauma Center at RMC. After all the studies, he was, at that point, he was given about 3% chance of survival. Following the continuation of care from first responders on the scene to air care and his treatment to RMC, Bailey is alive today after critical spine and brain injuries. He's recovered after 46 days of recovery at the hospital. One of the most important kind of things to note here, and one of the reasons I think it was successful, too, was air care's transport is a lot less bumpy of a ride than it is in the back of an ambulance going down roads sometimes. So that's something that's important to note. So what do we want to do? We want to bring this ability to Popka, and here is what it's going to look like. Our location, we determine as a number one spot, is our current Station 4, located off of West Orange Avenue. Here you can see the layout and specifications for the helicopter pad, and again, which one's the lady? So that's the actual helicopter pad they're proposing. This is going to be the crew quarters. Here's our current Station 4. Kind of give you some of that. Everything is going to be constructed, of course, FAA compliance, the apron and everything. We have some people in the back can answer more questions. But we want to, again, understand what the structure is that they're proposing. What is an airbase? Crew quarters similar to a fire station, or they are staffed 24/7, just like we are with the nurse, the paramedic, and the pilot. The 50 by 50 compliant helipad and FAA compliant fencing, and a small build-out. What it's not, again, is a heavy maintenance facility that's performed, that's just performed at off-site facility in Kissimmee currently. It's not a refueling station, actually fuel they get is at, on the top of RMC. It's not a hazardous materials storage site. It's, you know, minimal chemicals are stored, if anything, it's more to help maintain the Some of the safety measures the helicopter comes with, again, the helicopter terrain avoidance systems, fire suppression systems, weather radar, traffic alert, and collision avoidance. And again, one of the things that this team has been really good at working is a predetermined approach and departure pass from the location, and a noise mitigation planning as well. Again, the other benefit we're going to see with this, air care team is involved in numerous community education, educational things. Prom-Promise, Touch a Truck events, safety expos, they've been involved with our Public Safety Day for years. And that training, you see that bottom right picture, is them actually training with us, they've come out numerous times. Providing that type of training and that exposure to our personnel is just going to make everyone stronger. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm not sure who's dog this is.
All right, questions? Commissioner Velasquez?
Well, I'm just glad that they found another location. It appears that there's not very residential, which was a concern. Fortunately, with Rock Springs Ridge, they were concerned with the location. It was too heavily populated, not just with residents, but schools and, you know, the parks. This location, I find, is probably a better fit. I know there's a, if you go back, go back to where the location is, I can't see it as clear, but show me where they're going to be at.
So this is, so here's Station 4 right now, they're going to be just west, right here. So this is the actual helipad, and this is actually their crew quarters and their parking.
And then what surrounds them? I see a lot of open space. What's on the top over there?
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, that's just a land, open?
No, no, in the corner here on the left side. What is that?
Over here, this is some industrial businesses and such.
Okay. And so when you, I mean, have you surveyed the commercial and the industrial business owners in that location?
I know we've, I know we've had, we've reached out a little bit, we haven't had much response, to be honest with you.
Yeah, because that's important. You know, we don't want to surprise them and have a helicopter in their backyard. We want them to at least embrace, you know, embrace the idea of having, you know, the critical care behind them. So that's important. That's the only thing that I will suggest, is to make sure that if there's business owners in the area there, and any residential, that you do notify them.
And we've reached out to the HOA with Lake Heinegger, which is right, you know?
Which is the?
Heinegger, Lake Heinegger State, or Lake Heinegger State.
Oh, okay. And that's important.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, even if you have to have a community meeting or a meeting with the HOA Board, that's important to have that, so that you don't have what did happen with Rock Springs Ridge, which, you know, you had more naysayers come out than anyone to support it. Okay? That's the only thing that I have. I mean, I've seen this presentation, I think it's a, it's a great asset for Popka, certainly for the fire department. You know, you deal with the critical, you know, cases here in Popka, and if it saves one life, and you're right, because during the next-door neighbor, and sometimes I look in social media, there's these major accidents that are happening now with the new Parkway, and so if it's a service that we can provide to save lives, it's absolutely welcomed.
Okay, Pilot Bankson?
Yeah, it's just slightly under a half mile to the nearest residence there. Is there any numbers on the DB and how far that carries, you know, a half mile away? What is the DB reading at that, decibels?
Oh, so basically, actually, they did a significant study with the aircraft, and they can speak more to it, but just to quickly kind of, quick analogy, it is no louder than a fire truck. The cue siren of a fire truck is literally the same decibels.
Because it should, I mean, again, the statistics should back up that I think this is a great location, and, you know, as you said, the other one, there was a challenge, this one just seems to be the perfect fit. And just, I'm really pleased with how you all have proceeded in this, and I appreciate it. I think this is a tremendous asset to the area here, and critical care, obviously, the golden hour, and this is going to save a lot more lives.
Commissioner Smith?
Likewise, I think it's a great asset for our city and for our residents. I did have one question. You mentioned the number three a couple of times. Is there going to be three helicopters there, or is there three helicopters in the fleet?
Yes, sir, three helicopters in the fleet. So if you go back, so, oh, there it is. That picture there in the middle is the, is the actual three assets. There's one in Kissimmee, there's one actually now in Leesburg, and the current location of this one is Longwood, they're going to move west towards us. So these are the three helicopters that are actually available for air care. So kind of a neat, since you brought it up, if ours happens to go somewhere else, usually they move up, the helicopters will put them in the best location possible for the area.
All right, sounds good.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, to answer Commissioner Bankson's point, I stood outside when they had the Sunday Community Meeting for Rock Springs Ridge with the resident, he was actually a musician, so he had his little app out to judge decibel levels, and we were a few hundred yards away, and it never got above 80. So in context of what, a siren from a, from a fire truck would be much lower than that. So I don't think that's a concern of mine, because it was, it was pretty quiet. I did contact the city of Longwood when we were exploring the other location, just to see if they had complaints, because their, their current location is very close to residential.
Absolutely.
And they don't field that many calls, at least anecdotally, from our conversation that I had with them. My only, my only question would be, from a flight path perspective, is there a set flight path coming in and out of this location?
Yes, and actually, I think, let's see, I had, overhead, oop. So, and it's hard to see up here, but that is our current Station 4, or where the site is proposed for the aircraft, and the, and the flight in and out is actually going to go south, it's going to go over the lake, directly over to the highways, pretty much, and that's how they travel normally, so.
Okay. Because the only impact in that regard, because Lake Conigan is over to the southeast, but we do have something on the agenda for today, right? And we're just going to be more, and that's Avian Point down to the south there, too.
Yeah, we drove around that area yesterday as well, and even the, you know, the parcel that's under about now, you know, there's always potential for that, but I think that's kind of going to be the over Holtz Lake right onto the highways is our entry.
And like I said, I mean, I didn't really even start hearing the aircraft until it was, you know, within sightline, just above us, when they.
And Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, by the time we get over Holtz Lake, or even, we're going to be 600, they're going to be 600 feet in the air at that point, so it's very quick, as I said.
And just kind of put things in perspective, because when people hear about this, they think, oh my God, this is just going to be up-down all day long. But really, from an average call frequency, what should people expect?
Well, we did some of our due diligence and research as far as how often we've used it this past year, so we lived it from May to May of last year, we utilized them six times. You know, types of calls, and I have some of that here. Now, is that going to increase, you know, again, with our growth?
When you say us, you mean city of Popka?
Yes.
But I'm just talking about, just in, like, the Longwood location.
Yeah.
And from my understanding, again, this is very high-level conversation, but maybe average one, two calls per day at most.
That's where they're at.
Right.
And, um.
That's what I was generally wanting to get into. I just want people to have the right lens when they think about this, because, you know, again, when we, when they were still proposing the Rock Springs location, there was a lot of noise around just the frequency of these things. And so to Commissioner Velasquez's point, the business owners around there, what the expectation would be for some of the up-down of the helicopter, I don't think we're talking, like, ridiculous volumes here.
Right. You know, and if they have to move up at times, we talk, you know, even, just consider that, or, you know, you know, interfacility stuff, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the benefits far outweigh the nuisance opportunity for something like this.
Okay, all right. So what, I think the next step then is we will bring this back to council, I think between now and the next council meeting, we're going to go out and do the community meeting for the neighborhood, and we'll bring it back to council and approve the.
Yeah, what we're trying to do now is move forward with this opportunity, obviously, with your blessing, and, you know, make sure we can reach an agreement with the team.
Yeah, so see this back in two weeks as an agenda item. I just want to bring it up just as a discussion first and then bring it back. So any questions you need to ask the, either Orlando Health or pilots? We good? All right, good. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for coming out. Thank you, thank you. Okay, public comment. Susan, you got anybody?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Rogers Back at 7 West Main Street, Suite 100. Reason for today, just want to kind of clarify. Reason for today, just wanted to kind of clarify on some of the things I might have heard at the recent Rock Springs Ridge golf swap idea that was kind of given to us last Tuesday. I didn't hear if there was a tentative date for the land swap to be completed, so I just wanted to see if, maybe you're going to give some of this more information in your report, because I just noticed that you did have that as an item. Prior to land swap transaction, prior to it being completed, will there be an operational budget or cost analysis provided to the residents of Rock Springs Ridge? During the leasing period, will the city or the HOA be responsible for the roof and sewer repairs that was mentioned during that meeting by the current occupant, that's the tavern owner, I believe it is, at the restaurant there? During the leasing period, will the city or the HOA be responsible for maintaining the golf course? I know we have a lot of tree debris, fallen trees, dead trees on the site, so just trying to get an ideal of that situation. And then in regards to the land swap itself, is it predicated upon the allowable density that the developer was tentatively going to get with Rock Springs Ridge, I mean, the golf course itself? Or is it, because when I kind of looked at the analysis with the current 2102 Harmon Road, the max density for those 28 acres, I think it was, was roughly about, I'm sorry, 21 acres, 21, 23 acres, was roughly 345 units. And then at the 2131, 39 Harmon Road location, roughly 120 acres. So that's giving it a total of 466 total units, whether that's apartments. I kind of figured it may be apartments, because to the, to the west of the 2102 Harmon Road site, east shore apartment complex, they currently have 280, 85 units being constructed there now. So that's kind of, you know, ideal of exactly what is a swap. Because I know looking at your numbers from the appraisal, the 2102 Harmon Road appraised at 1.842, 1.8 million, just kind of relatively safe with that. And then the site to the north, 2139 Harmon Road, appraised for 643. So, you know, I'm looking at it from a standpoint, if I'm a resident living in Rock Springs Ridge, we want to try to get the best value for our buck, which, if we don't need to assume the whole 2.4, and maybe the 1.8 is more applicable, you know, for me, that's what I would like for it to see. But at the end of the day, it's all ultimately up to the council to decide in regards to that. And then the other thing, you guys had one of the drawbacks being the, the cell tower being relocated. I guess that'd be additional cost to the city. There again, if we're looking at these unit mix, we can possibly maintain and keep the 2139 Harmon Road to where the cell tower can be relocated there. And then also notice that the current fire, I don't know if it's Station 6, is down on the site for the hospital. I don't know if it's going to be there forever, but this could be a possible potential site in the future for it to be relocated as well. So that was just some of my concerns I wanted to kind of address. Maybe you'll address it later in your report, but I just want to be on record for this.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we'll have it in the report. Yeah, that's a lot of questions. I don't, if you wouldn't mind, Rogers, if you'd send me that list, and then we'll kind of take, take them one at a time. I mean, I'll kind of go through the report today, but it's more high level than, than these detailed questions, but, yeah. Is that it? Okay, all right. Okay, let's see. Consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? If not, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nottingham subdivision. Bobby?
Thank you, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Oops, I just hit the wrong button. This is the major development plan for the Nottingham subdivision. The property is located at 3515 and 3081 Poncan Road, and is approximately 23.4 acres in size. Rezoning was recently approved for this property to rezonate to RSF-1B for the purposes of developing a 46 lot, single-family residential subdivision. And the major development plan proposes 46 lots. Lot widths range between, or minimum lot widths are 75 feet, a lot area of 8,000 square feet, and a minimum, minimum living area of 1,600 square feet are provided, and that is what's required in the RSF-1B zoning district. Access to the subdivision is from Poncan Road. Two public streets are proposed within the development. Stormwater retention is proposed on Track C, which is on the western side of the development. Per the requirements of the Land Development Code, 20% of the site is reserved as open space. There'll be a landscape buffer provided along Poncan Road, and adjacent to an ag-zone property located on lots 34 through 46. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, subject to a right turn lane being provided on the plans, which is provided on the plans, and staff recommend approval. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby? You okay, Commissioner Velazquez?
I, I am.
Good?
I just want to ask about the potential access that I see for one of the cul-de-sacs.
Are you referring to this one right down?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be a future connection to the property to the south at such time it develops. So it's basically going to be a stubout. So when that property develops, that road will punch through there.
And who owns that property currently?
It'd be the developer that owns it. It's going to be dedicated to City Rideaway, though. So it'd be the City of Apopka.
Okay.
Commissioner Becker? You good?
No, I mean, Commissioner Smith touched on that. I mean, so, in our land development code, do we require the developers to put anything in their HOA bylaws or anything like that, that kind of give that indication? I know that there's going to be a sign there that says "future road connection" or something like that, so is that basically checking that box, is that signage?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there going to be a turning lane on Poncan to go into this?
Yes, ma'am. There'll be a left turn lane along Poncan, and then a right turn lane leading into the development, coming from this direction on Poncan, which is required per the code.
Okay. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Just one more question.
I almost made it back to my seat.
I, no, I saw that. So, you know, me with the lights, will they be lights outside of the development to kind of light up? Do we have a sidewalk on the outside of that development?
Correct. There'll be a sidewalk on the outside of the development. A lighting plan will be provided with the construction plans, and that's provided per Duke Energy's specification.
Okay, so, and the developer knows that they will be providing, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. No, okay. I won't call you back.
All right. Okay. So anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Come on down.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hill Lane, Hills Lane, easy for me to say, Apopka. At any rate, my only question is related to the aspect of schools, is one you will be hearing from me constantly, that we keep the city, the county, the state, and school board continue to rubber stamp this type of development, and we continue to have trailers, the brand-new property, the school that's going in, the K, I can't remember the number on Jason Dwelly, has 12 sites built onto it. We cannot continue to operate this way. The safety of our children is vital. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to confirm on this development, we have the capacity and concurrency available for this? On this particular development?
At the rezoning stage, there was a capacity determination that was denied. It was short by, I think, four seats at the high school level. But when they go to plat, they'll have to go through concurrency, which is required under Florida law.
Okay. All right. That, look for a motion to approve the major development plan for the Nottingham subdivision. Some, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, brownfield area designation, Michael Rodriguez.
Afternoon, members of the commission. Today, this is, this item is a request to authorize the city staff to begin the process of having a property designated as a brownfield, as well as the opportunity for the city council to make the public announcement for the public hearings that are required in order for a brownfields designation. The current contract purchaser for the property, which is located at 1617 West Keene Road, has made an application for a brownfield designation for the property. If a brownfields designation is achieved, the, the contract purchaser can enter into an agreement with the DEP in order to have a, to do brownfields remediation. That allows and opens the opportunity for certain economic investments for the cleaning of the property, as well as the redevelopment of the property. The applicant has suggested that the property is, is maybe available for potential commercial development, and hence such incentives on the part of the state in order to redevelop, to clean and redevelop the property would be beneficial in the long term to the city. So the requirements are, initially, that the council here authorize us to move forward for the designation process, as well as to designate and announce the public meetings. The state law requires that there are two public hearings that are held for a brownfield designation, with one of the meetings actually held at or as close as possible to the site. Tentatively, we have scheduled May 17th at 6:00 PM for the first public meeting at the site, actually at 1617 West Keene Road, with the second public hearing being here at the city council, at our regularly scheduled June 2nd, 1:30 PM meeting for, for the final, for the final designation. Such a resolution is then submitted to the state to notify DEP that the city has authorized such designation of the properties as a brownfield, and then the applicant, the contract purchaser or potential property owner can then proceed forward to begin negotiating with DEP to receive what is known as a brownfield site rehabilitation agreement. So what staff seeks here today is a, seeking a motion to authorize the process to move forward, as well as the public announcement of the two public hearing dates, and I can repeat there, May 17th at 6:00 PM at the site, and June 2nd, 1:30 PM at our regularly scheduled city council meeting.
So, on the May 17th, are we required to be there?
No, you're not required to be there. You can attend, I can ask questions to the public, it'll be a public hearing, it'll be noticed, there'll be minutes, but there, it's not a requirement for the entire council to be there.
Oh, okay, because I do, I did attend the whole brownfield when we did the Sam's Club, and it was a very interesting process. And from that process, we did get Sam's Club, which is very successful in our community. It serves both, you know, Akoi and Apopka, and so I think it's a good thing that we do this with properties, okay?
Commissioner Bankson? Commissioner Smith?
I guess I'm just curious as to why the address is on Keene Road when it appears the property is actually on Akoi, Apopka Road.
No, I think, well, that's the, the property that the applicant has submitted, is that being their property. The applicant is here to ask any specific, to answer any specific questions, but the application has submitted to the, to the city had the address as 1617 Keene.
16, what was there before?
Nursery.
It's the northeast corner of the, of the intersection of Keene and Akoi, Apopka. It's a former nursery.
Which nursery is that one?
I don't have the exact names. As I can, counsel for the applicant is present here to answer those detailed questions.
Commissioner Becker, while he's coming up? Yeah, so perception's a funny legal word, right? What's, is there a concrete burden of proof that we have to consider as a council when making a brownfield designation for, say, a former nursery? Or a former, like, gas station? Or is there different criteria, or is it just pretty much?
Now, the statute provides the criteria that you're to analyze, that was part of the submittal on the part of the applicant, which was part of your packet. That, those determinations are made at the second public hearing when the council votes on the actual resolution. The resolution, once you make your findings, the resolution will state that the applicant has met the six standards for a brownfields designation. This first hearing today is, I mean, basically, we're having the council authorize the process to move forward. But those are the six criteria the staff will review, and then make the presentation as part of the second public hearing, that the applicant does or does not meet the six requirements for a brownfield designation.
So, those six things enumerated was where?
It's in, it's the stat, the actual application provides the six items, I believe it's six items.
Is it in the letter?
Yes.
So each one of those section headers is what we're calling one of the six?
Yes. It does, each one of those, they have to meet each one of those standards in order to be eligible for a brownfield designation.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Michael Schnaps Tyler with the Law Firm of Cobb, Cole, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue in Daytona Beach, here tonight, or here this afternoon, on behalf of the applicant. The property owner is, the current property owner is also here as well. To Commissioner Smith's question, there's multiple frontages along the property on Keene and Akoi, Apopka Road. My understanding is the current address for the parcels is on the, on the Keene Road, and there's a building there, and that's where we're going to have that, that meeting. So we just wanted to make sure that address was used, so that folks know where to specifically go in case they want to attend that meeting on the 17th. But you're correct, there are, you know, frontages along both sides of the parcel. And then to Commissioner Becker's question, you know, the definition of brownfields, you can blame the feds, they created it. The word is a site that has actual or perceived environmental issues. We've done our due diligence out there, we've investigated the site. We know that there were storage tanks out there, we know that there's a history of ag and nursery use and application of agrochemicals. And so the state, you know, incentivizes someone who goes in and, you know, not only finds the site that's contaminated and cleans it up, but also finds the site that you think might be contaminated, and you do your homework, you do your work, and you find that there's nothing out there. So we're at that stage now where we think there's something out there, we're going to investigate it. I did list the criteria from the statute in our letter. We feel pretty comfortable that we meet all of that, and appreciate your support and opportunity to move forward along this path.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm reading the letter, and, to me, and this is just my opinion, the criteria is more, once you have that designation, you commit to doing those activities after the fact. My question was, and I, I think probably answered my own question, is perception is a pretty, gives, allows us a lot of latitude. I just didn't know if there was, you know, a checkbox that said for a former nursery-type property, you've got to meet this criteria, this criteria, this criteria to get brownfield. If not, then, you know, I know all the economic benefits and what you have to do after the fact in terms of remediation, that sort of thing. I just want to make sure that I'm looking at it through the right lens to make, make the right determination, so.
Understood, yeah. There's, there's not specific standards for, you know, the specific historic uses that are out there. We've seen, you know, golf courses be designated as brownfields, gas stations, manufacturing facilities, and ag, because, you know, there is a history of chemicals that, again, have long been banned, no longer utilized, but someone has to address it. And that's our plan to do this at this site, to make sure that the site is, is safe for human health and the environment.
Any other questions?
I just, just for full disclosure, I had one, brownfield came up when I was on the county commission, and I, I appreciate what you're doing, and I understand exactly where you are. I don't know that I agree with, I think that the rules should be a lot tighter than they are. I don't doubt that what you're doing is completely legal, and it's, and it's what you should be, but we had one, it was on Thompson Road, that nursery had been abandoned for 20 something years, and, and they gave them brownfield designation, which I understand, you know, the economics of it, you know, the question is, for me, from the dollars that, you know, there are plenty of brownfield, you know, there's only so many dollars for brownfield, you know, remediations, and when you're, when you're limiting because of a perceived, you know, chemical usage from the nurseries, I just, I get a little bit of a hang-up, and, and in the vote that, that was at the county commission level, I was, at level, I was the only no vote on the, on it, and not from a, you met all the, you know, the requirements, it's just, you know, there's dollars that we could have been spending on actual, you know, laundromats and things where there's, we know there are issues, and the line to get these properties cleaned up that we know we have problems with is being limited because of these dollars, so, so I don't, you know.
Yeah, that's a fantastic point, Mayor, and just to make sure that the commission is clear, the incentives only come available if you sign the cleanup agreement commission is clear, the incentives only come available if you sign the cleanup agreement with the state that says you're, you've investigated the site, you're cleaning up the site, you're taking care of every issue vertically and horizontally, just like you're the party that polluted, and, and that's our intent here. So we want to make sure everyone understands that, you know, if, if, if this is approved, that, that's the intent, is to, to move forward and, and commit to doing a full environmental cleanup, just like any other responsible party.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, because you, you ask yourself, what, what would stop us from just declaring everything brown, brownfield, right? And so, to your point, it's a scarcity of resource that, that this is coming from a pot of money to incentivize you to do the remediation and that sort of thing. So maybe a good piece of information for us as a council would be, is, is there truly scarcity of those dollars? Are all those dollars utilized in any given year, and are we putting, you know, things like that at risk if, if we do approve these?
And, and so the, the incentives that are available are tax credits, right? So you go out, you spend the money on the cleanup, and then you make application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for tax credits. The state sets aside ten million dollars per year for all of the brownfield sites in the state, so it makes it the second biggest cleanup program in our state after the, the gas station program. So the gas station program, we pay taxes when we go to the gas stations, that, that funds those cleanups, brownfields is a, is a tax refund. Most developers don't pay Florida corporate income tax, so they end up selling the tax credits. The, the limit is ten million per year, but if that amount is exhausted, it just comes out of the next year's budget. So it's not like there's, there's, if you do the work, you're never going to get the resource, or someone's going to get kicked out, it just means you're, you might wait a year to get your credits. So there is a cap, but again, the, the cap is not a, a first-come, first-served, you get kicked out, it's just you've got to wait till the, the funding lines up with you.
Okay.
So, so is it, my understanding that, once we approve this, that they actually don't get the dollars until they come back and they've checked all the boxes?
Correct, yes, yes, sir.
Yep, yep, yep.
What was the question?
They, they won't get the application until they come back to the city commission with, with the improvements that are needed, or, or.
Well, and, and not only that, that you can't receive the incentives until you've actually done the work, right? It's, it's a tax credit equal to the work you actually do, so it's not like the state pays for your work. They have to hire the, you know, consultants to go out and do the testing, they have to hire the professionals to do the cleanup, they have to pay those professionals, and then you apply to the state for the, the tax credits, for the cleanup. So they're, they're actually doing the work instead of the state paying for the work.
Okay. And so when you say there's a limited, there's a, a limited pot?
So, yeah, yeah, so the, the tax credits, that the legislature can only authorize up to ten million dollars per year in, in the tax credits to be issued, but if the state receives application for more than ten million dollars?
Right.
It just, they, they approve it, and you've got a letter that says your, your, your application has been approved, but you have to wait until the next year's ten million dollars is issued. So if, if the state receives twelve million dollars in applications, they approve it, they've done the work, they've demonstrated it, and there's a ten million dollar cap?
Right.
The people who are part of the two million dollars just have to wait one more year until the next ten million dollars is authorized.
So where are you at in this process right now?
We, 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 what is, the request before you all is to, to tell the state that the brownfield program can be used on this property. And so if the brownfield area is designated, we can then sign an agreement with the state that says we're going to be the responsible party for the cleanup, and then once that agreement is signed, we can now enter the program and apply for the tax credits after we do the work, after we do the testing work, after we do the cleanup work, after we do the reporting to the state and all of that. So we're at the very beginning, you know, of that, that, that process, but the hope is, the, you know, the way the brownfield program works, the, the state actually takes the brownfield reports first for the cleanup, so we can move through that process, you know, faster with, with DEP.
So you're working with the new budget calendar year, or is this one already, do you know if this one's been exhausted already, and we just, what we approve is going to be for the next?
So the, so applications for work that's done in 2020?
Right.
Have until January of the next year to apply, so, or, I'm sorry, 2021. So if we do, when we do work in twenty, we've done work in 2021, we would apply in January of 2022 for the work that was done in 2021, so it would likely come out of the 2022, 2023 budget, right? Is, is, is how the timing would, would work.
Okay.
And what happens if all the boxes are not checked?
All the boxes are not?
You're six, you're six.
I mean, if, if we don't meet the, there, there's two ways that brownfield areas can be designated. One, at, at, on the local government's own initiative, and then sometimes you see local governments designate brownfield areas on their own, and then the way we've requested it is, is through what's called the mandatory or specific criteria, where we've demonstrated we've met the criteria. So if, you can talk to your city attorney about that, but we, you know, we would submit just like in a quasi judicial hearing, if we meet the criteria, it, it should be approved, but maybe it's better for Mr. Rodriguez.
It would be, it would be similar, an applicant has to prove and has to show with competent substantial evidence that they meet all the standards that are, that are listed as part of the statute. If we come in, the staff will review it, and the staff believes and recommends they only meet five of the six, then they don't, they don't get that statutory threshold to be designated, to be designated as a brownfield, similar to a special exception. You have to meet certain criteria, if you don't meet them, you can deny the request for a special exception, similar here, you can deny the request for a brownfield designation, and the resolution's not adopted, because they failed to meet the criteria that the statute lays out.
All right. All right, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Rod Olson. Need to put you on the front row here.
He's trying to get his steps in.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane. Looking at this brownfield, this is something, well, we're looking at Rock Springs Ridge, as the, the attorney indicated, that golf courses typically have contamination, it may be something we need to consider from that, that's my point in that, thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Okay. Anybody else? All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion for authorization to hold a public hearing on the request for brownfield area designation on behalf of Branch Apopka Associates LLC. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-two, any changes?
No changes.
No changes, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-two. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-six.
Ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-six. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Apopka by creating chapter two, article eight, code enforcement, by amending part three, land development code, article two, administration, section two point three, advisory and decision-making bodies and persons, by amending part three, article nine, enforcement, section nine point five point one, responsibility for enforcement, by amending part three, article nine, section nine point five in its entirety, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
There are no changes.
No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-seven.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-seven. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Donna and Carl Redder, located on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Gene, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-seven. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight twenty-nine.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-eight twenty-nine. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to residential, single-family, large lot, RSF one B, for certain real property located at two oh two, two South Binion Road, comprising nineteen point eleven acres, more or less, and owned by Citrus Ridge Real Estate LLC, providing for directions to the community development director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon, Allison Williams, planner one with the city's planning division. Today, the applicant is requesting to rezone a nineteen point eleven acre parcel of land from T Transitional to RSF one B, residential, single-family, large lot. The subject property is located at two oh two, South Binion Road. Property was annexed into the city on December fourth, two thousand and four via ordinance number seventeen oh five. The applicant intends to develop twenty-four single-family units on the property. The DRC recommends approval, planning recom, planning commission recommends approval, staff recommends approval, myself and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for Allison?
Just again, the difference between one A and one B is?
RSF one A is residential, single-family estate, it's a ninety, ninety-foot width lots, and RSF one B is residential, single-family, large lot, seventy-five foot width lot.
So I know the property just to the south has the higher designation, I just want to make sure there's not?
It's just larger lot sizes.
Right. Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, my only comment, because, you know, obviously, it's a topic, the capacity is already existing on this property because the land use is?
Correct.
Consistent with the zoning classification.
It already has a future land use, has a designation of residential, though.
Yeah, and I would only ask, I mean, to Commissioner Banksen's point, and we've seen this on other developments that have come into Apopka, is have an all possible, a like-for-like kind of lot, if the adjoining or abutting community, you know, and other developments, they've kind of done a like-to-like?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of lot sizing, so if that's an opportunity there, and that would be preferred, but that's outside of this piece of business.
Sure.
Jose Quintero, we're going to just answer that while we've got you here on the?
How are you, Commissioners? Jose Quintero, Citrus Ridge Real Estate, I own the, the subject parcel. We've talked with city staff about making the lots that adjoin the neighborhood to the south ninety-foot wide lots, so our plan is to do just that. Interior lots will be about seventy-five foot, but the ones on the southern boundary will match the neighborhood to the south.
Great, thank you.
I'm here if there are any other further questions.
Any other questions?
Can I just? You sat with me at P and Z?
Yes, I did.
You grew all your beard. I saw the name and didn't recognize you. It's nice seeing you.
It wasn't my idea, it was my wife's.
You sat with me at P and Z.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve, let's see here, where are we at? Ordinance number twenty-eight twenty-nine at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-one.
Ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-one. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, designating the future land use map to mixed use for a portion of certain real property generally located east of State Road four twenty-nine and south of Peterson Road, and west of Grand Avon Parkway, owned by PMDW Ventures LLC, comprising nine point eight four acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
T?
Jean Sanchez with the community development department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-one, applying the future land use designation of mixed use for a portion of twenty-six hundred Peterson Road. Property is located south of Peterson Road and east of State Road four fourteen, adjacent to Avon Point subdivision. The request applies to the northern portion of the property comprising of nine point eight four acres. The city's future land use map currently shows the subject property has an existing future land use designation of mixed use, however, during a title search, no documentation was found that a mixed-use future land use designation was approved on the property. To correct discrepancy, the applicant requests the mixed-use future land use designation be formally re-approved on the subject property. Current zoning designation of the entire property is mixed-use East Shore Gateway Subdistrict, and is compatible with the mixed-use future land use designation. The DRC recommends approval and adds meeting on April thirteenth, twenty-two, twenty-one. The planning commission recommended approval of the request. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Question for Jim, can you come down and, I just want to find out how this could have happened, where we didn't know?
This is one of those discrepancies that staff doesn't know how it actually happened. We did our research to try to find where the property was designated as mixed use, and we could not find the paperwork, so.
So how do you know it was supposed to be then, mixed use?
It was, it was on the, the area has a lot of mixed-use districts, and that was probably done about the same time that a lot of the other ones were done, so it might have been just a map, a map change that was done, and then we utilized those maps as our adopted land use, uh, land use.
And when, when would that have been?
Yeah, probably about ten to, ten to twelve years ago. Twenty-fourteen.
Okay, twenty-fourteen, okay, I just, just want to know how.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an oddball one, you keep coming up with them.
Okay, all right. My, my only question would be, which land development code version would this mixed use apply to? Because if this is a fix, and you truly feel passionately that it was done, or had this designation prior to our land development code rewrite, would that?
Well, it wouldn't have been the land development, this is, this is a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Land development code was done in twenty nineteen, but the comp plan was, is the twenty-thirty comp plan that was in, in force at that time. Land use versus zoning.
Hold on a second. So current zoning on that property is what?
Do you have that?
It's mixed-use East Shore Gateway, that used to be mixed C E C in the old code.
So it was just transitioned to the new code designation?
Correct, for zoning, yeah.
Right, okay.
That was done, probably.
Right, because if it had that zoning classification, then obviously, putting two and two together, you would expect that it would have a mixed-use future land use designation.
Yeah, typically, we don't like changing the land, the zoning unless the land use already has a compatible designation for it.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, any questions? Okay, Commissioner Banksen? Mr. Velazquez?
So let me just understand, it, it didn't have a land use assigned to this piece of property?
We could not find proof in our records that it had gone through a proper land use designation for a, going from whatever it was to what we feel is the?
Proper.
Proper, proper land use of mixed use.
Yep, you said it's something occurred in two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen is about when we think it went through a change, but again, we couldn't find the proof for that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, fortunately, none of my staff or I were here at that time, so I got, blame it on the previous, previous group.
I was here. That's why I'm asking.
Do you still have records?
I do have all my records, okay. All right, so that, it's, it's interesting that we couldn't find anything. All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else for Gene or Jim? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, nobody? All right, so, let's see here, where are we at? So looking for a motion then to approve ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-one at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-four.
Ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-four. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to Kelly Park Inter- to Kelly Park Interchange District, Mixed Use MUKPI, and assigning Kelly Park Crossing Transition Overlay District for certain real property located west of Golden Gem Road and south of West Kelly Park Road, comprising 35.56 acres more or less and owned by Foremost Co., Inc., providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon and happy Cinco de Mayo. Phil Martinez, Planner Two with the city's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from Transitional Districts to Kelly Park Interchange District with a transition overlay along with a master plan and major development plan. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and comprises of an estimated 35.56 acres. Surrounding area consists of residential and agricultural properties along with Golden Gem Road to the east and West Kelly Park Road to the north. The property is owned Transitional District and in accordance with the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code, the applicant is requesting Kelly Park Interchange District zoning with a transition overlay. The subject property has mixed-use future land use, which is compatible with the proposed Kelly Park Interchange District zoning. The master major development plan shows 165 single-family lots with 50-foot wide lots being along the exterior and 32-foot wide lots being located in the interior. The proposed minimum living area is 1,250 square feet and the subdivision is proposed to be accessed off of Golden Gem Road to the east, a stubout leading to Sadler Road to the south and another stubout located at the northern end of the development. The applicant has provided 10.4 acres of open space where 5.33 acres is required. This open space includes a dog park, landscape buffers, and a community pool and clubhouse. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning and the master major development plan and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2834 and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on May 19th, 2021. This concludes my presentation and the applicant and I are available for questions.
Questions for Phil?
I, I do. So what's mixed use about this?
The applicant is proposing two variations of single-family homes.
That's single use. So, and it's a leading question, I apologize. This doesn't, this isn't mixed use. It's a single-family residential. And when I look at the transition overlay in our, in our Form-Based Code, it states on one of the sentences, "The zone shall respect pedestrian function scale and shall mainly be comprised of single or multi-use office, medium-density residential buildings, and urban single-family homes." So I'm just. If, if the language of the latitude is in our Form-Based Code that the spirit of mixed use isn't required, then I think we've got some glitches to fix.
The, the designations in this area are all supposed to be mixed use as it is because it is a mixed-use product in terms of the land use itself. So it automatically goes to mixed use no matter what. It's what designation or what location it is. In this case, it's, I believe this is the, this is Transition?
Transition.
Transition. So what we're looking at is what is comparable or inappropriate mix for this location? If we were to put any commercial on this, it, it doesn't front anything that actually could support a commercial-type use. So what we're looking at that in this case is they've got like a townhome-type development and a single-family development. So we, staff feels that that, where this is located is an appropriate type mixed use.
Right, because when, when we were going through the land development code, that's one of the things I drove to have changed, right? Because we had a whole bunch of mixed-use classification and the way that was originally written, really no one had a requirement to build anything other than residential.
Correct.
Because regardless, residential is residential. I consider that a use. And then retail or commercial or industrial or whatever, office, that's a different use. So mixed use in my feeble mind is residential plus anything else of the ones that I just mentioned. And this one is just a pure residential play. And I just don't think that that really meets the spirit of this mixed-use type of development, even with our own writing of the code. Because the transition overlay, I mean, it does say that. It says, "The zone shall," which in my mind is a requirement. And it talks about all those things using the word "and," meaning all of those are in play. So why, why should I not, when I'm reviewing something like this, expect that?
We're, we, again, we're looking at where it would be appropriate to do a mixed-type use product. In this case, Golden Gem and Sadler really isn't an area where we want to pop some commercial in there because that's almost like spot zoning at that point. So what we're, what we've been staying with is Plymouth Sorento and if there's a feeder road or a, an arterial like Kelly Park or something like that, that's where we're looking at the, a true mixed-use product.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, it's a more macro-level concern is, you know, constantly we have residential, residential, residential. And when we come to something like this where it's mixed use and you would expect to see some sort of commercial, retail, something where you're truly, I mean, the first sentence there.
For Transitional?
Or the sentence I just said, "The zone shall respect pedestrian function." There's not really a pedestrian function there.
Well, one of the things that they've got, they, they did put in a number of pedestrian or pocket parks in the, the main park, which is required also per the code. Again, it's, if you want us to go back to the, the drawing board and require a commercial where staff really doesn't feel it is appropriate, this is a mixed-use product, regardless of saying it's residential, all of it or not. It is a mixed use, it does have different uses. And the Transitional also states about single-family type developments primarily with a mixed-use product. But again, it's, it's where it's actually supposed to, should be appropriate. The, the overall KPI Form-Based Code does have a map and in those colors that are on it, if you're on the border of some of those colors, it does give a little bit of discrepancy. It's not exactly that line. This is clearly, it's in the, it is in the Transitional area. But again, staff's trying to also be a little bit more cognizant of where we could put commercial.
So, but in actuality, what we're approving today is not this, correct? I mean, we're not approving the design. Or are we? Because on, on the lead-in packet, it just says, "Change of zoning, assignment of KPI, Transition Overlay District."
This is the first reading, second reading would be in, in a couple of weeks. And at that point, that's where we would want the, the approval for this, for the development also.
But. Sorry, I didn't. What are we approving today, just the zoning change?
Zoning, zoning change is first, first reading.
Okay, but not what we're seeing on paper here?
No, yes, what you see on paper is what you're, it is your, your major development plan. It is for approval today.
So. So, so forgive me, this isn't your fault. This is just, this is just the packet because the packet says I'm voting on a change of zoning, not a development agreement.
But within the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area, we do preliminary and zoning at the same time.
Okay.
So I have to go to this level of detail just to get the zoning done.
Okay, so just FYI, it'd be easier for us if it was clear on the packet to say that we're approving that as well.
To your point, I actually agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Becker. I, I don't disagree with your, with your issue. Here's my problem. My problem is, is when you look at the map, when you look at the map and you look at how the colors were drawn, there's not a lot of logic to this side of that one-mile radius. Because the idea is you've got neighborhood transitional, interchange, village center. You're going from no density to high density. And the problem is, is on this side of that circle, you don't have that transition. And there's no way for me to go, hey, that was an error, can I fix it? There's no neighborhood district, there's very little on the west side of, of Golden Gem. So when I look at that, I say, I can't flip this to neighborhood because there's nothing in the code, especially the Form-Based Code, that allows me to ask you to say, please let me do neighborhood instead of Transitional. So to your point, yes, it's Transitional, but is it really Transitional given the corridor? And that was what Jim was trying to explain, is that that Golden Gem corridor is not a commercial corridor. It's never going to be. Just look at where it's at.
So, not to go down a rabbit hole, but that takes us to a different problem, right? Then why did we all agree as a council to make that a transition area? If we didn't see value in it being a true transition type of district? We all approved the Form-Based Code and it is what it is.
Correct, but, but, but the problem with those lines, there's no legal description for those lines on paper, right? I mean, the best we can do is colors and parcel, parcel lines and pray that it's to scale. So the problem is, is there's got to be some variability here and the council has to understand that there has to be some variability in those lines on that map because unless you give me a legal description and we completely nail down every little parcel and out there in that area of Apopka, there's a million little parcels. Nothing's large tracts of land. So.
We also thought when, when this was getting approved, we thought that the, the developers were going to be able to do large, huge tracts of land similar to what they did in Oldham Park or Celebration. Unfortunately, that's not the reality out there is that these, the developers are putting together as much property as they can, but they're already trying to get four, five, six different property owners to agree to sell. And then we get a product that is two or three of these properties and not that 100-acre development that the, the Form-Based Code thought it was going to occur. So we're, the reality is different than, than what the dream was.
So let me play that one back. And I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult here. But because a developer can't cobble together multiple pieces of property to get some vast development, like, that's my concern? Why is that my concern? Like, we, we have Form-Based Code that we all collectively as a council, maybe not every single person that's sitting up here today, but when it was passed, this is what we had. This is what was put forth to us by staff as to say, we recommend this being passed and we did. And this is what's on paper. So the inability for people to cobble together property is not my issue. I want to stay true to what's written in the code. And that is a mixed-use property in a transition district that has direct language talking about what that, that mixed use should look like, which I don't see on what's being presented to me right now. That's, that's my thing.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I guess the, the question there would be, do we have any idea as to what the remainder of that property in that area is going to be developed? Is it all going to end up being residential and none of it end up being mixed use?
The majority of that property to the west of that is actually outside the one-mile radius. So it actually wouldn't fall within the Form-Based Code area to begin with. So it wouldn't be eligible for development under the, under the KPI Form-Based Code.
Commissioner Becker, what if we, I mean, and I, I understand your frustrations here. What if we came back and had Jim come back at, at just in a discussion mode? Kind of what we've got on the books as far as commercial and office? So we can, in the, in the Kelly Park Crossing area, so we can kind of get a feel for what non-residential uses we've got kind of somewhere on, on the books or, or, you know, ready to come forward. I mean, I understand that we don't, residential's great, we, we need residential, but we also want to make sure that we've got the commercial services and office and, you know, industrial that we need to go along with that.
Yeah, right now, I think everyone's staying in the, in the Village Center area, which is the corridor, both sides.
And so this is.
On the east side, it seems to be a little bit easier for, for some of those transitions to occur for, between transition neighborhood. We've actually been holding, pulling the line regarding the mixed-use product. We had somebody come in that had not quite as many units, but they had one acre of commercial and we said, no. So what we've got, and I, one of the glitch amendments that I'm looking at is requiring a certain percentage within that transition of, of a property so that it's not, somebody's not just trying to do a one acre and say it's mixed use, it's mixed use.
So.
If I had my, since this, this KPI Form-Based Code area was designed and put in the comprehensive plan before I got here, I probably would not have done this transition area as big as it is on the left-hand or on the west side of the 429. It's a big area and they did not include any neighborhood area that gives that transition between 15 units per acre to 10 units per acre to five units per acre and then back down to two. There's really not a provided transition on the west side of 429 like it is on the east side.
Well, I think now would be a good time because we've got so much going on in that, that, in the Kelly Park Crossing interchange. Why don't we come back next commission meeting and start the meeting out with a, kind of a overview of, you know, kind of what the whole area looks like, you know, what we've already got kind of on the books and then kind of at least address some of those issues. I mean, I, I understand, you know, as you get farther out, the problem is it goes from, you know, this zoning to, to one to 10 acres really fast. And so it's a, you know, I mean, it goes from, you know, 40-foot lots to, to five-acre, 10-acre lots really fast. And so that's a, it's a, you know, obviously, that's not in, in the city, but still, it's, it's part of that, that area. So, yeah, won't we, won't we do that? I mean, I guess I'll move on down the line here. Commissioner Banksen, you got any?
Well, again, the same lines, the anticipation here was to see some development. Where are restaurants going to finally be? Where is that, you know, the shopping and that thing that Apopka's been longing for? And that's, again, to your point, the colors that designate the one-square mile, this and that. This is towards this side, but that, this is the exact issue. There's no dividing line, how does it transition? So, you know, I see both sides of that and that, that is the concern. Are we getting so close to that that really we're just going to have a bunch of houses and a few retail and that's it?
Commissioner Velazquez?
I'm kind of just, kind of say ditto, ditto, which is, I saw this as a major residential development. I didn't see the mixed use other than the product of the, the homes was different. But that's kind of like a really murky area to kind of say it's mixed use. So I'm, I, I agree with the mayor. Let, let's come back and kind of discuss this form-based a little bit so that we can get a better understanding because if, what we want to promote is some commercial and retail and, you know, residence. Because what we just, what he just presented is all residential.
It's not the true Transitional.
No.
Well, I mean, I, I think for their, their product here to be successful, they're going to need to have commercials. So, I mean, it, it's in their best interest to make sure we've got commercial within, you know, a short distance and office and those kind of things. So, you know, I, if we could just do that, I mean, obviously, it'll be before, you know, we come back up for your second reading. And so that won't be a, you know, and if we got any adjustments we need to make, we can go from there. Any, any other questions or staff or the applicant?
Has school concern already been mitigated?
Yeah, this was actually one of the last projects to get a, a CEEL before the process was actually stopped. So we do actually have an active CEEL with the school board on this project.
All right. Okay. All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Now we'll bring it back to council and look for a motion. To approve ordinance number 2834 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Is there an opportunity to postpone this until we have that conversation?
Well, it would be after that. I mean, I'm fine doing that if you, if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just can't get behind it as it currently stands with it being a total residential play at this point. So if, if the council's willing, I mean, I would, I would motion.
Is there a motion that's currently being? Because this is the first reading. You can either now hold this over to second reading. If you move to deny this now, there'll be no second reading.
No, I mean, what I was saying is that can we postpone the first reading?
Well, you've already had the first reading. Matter's already been done at first reading. You can have the first reading, hold it off to second reading. Second reading, you may be able to table or postpone the second reading or work with the applicant to move the second reading, but you've already conducted the first reading of the ordinance.
So in essence, we can go ahead and pass the first reading and then we can ask, postpone the second reading.
Second reading is when you're going to either adopt or, or deny the, the ordinance to re, to rezone. But we've already held, we've already held the first reading. We can't undo what we just did.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we got a 3-2 vote. Bankson, Smith, and Nelson in the affirmative, and Becker and Velasquez in the opposition. Okay. Next up, resolution number 2021-11.
Okay. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Mid-Florida Materials to provide roll-off container collection, disposal, and waste in the City of Apopka, Florida pursuant to the City of Apopka Code of Ordinances, Chapter 58, Article 3, providing for the term of years for the franchise, providing for franchise fee, providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Jeff Weatherford, Public Services Director. She pretty much said everything. It's a non-exclusive franchise agreement. We'd ask that you approve the resolution. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jeff? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-11. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-12.
Oh, I didn't say aye. Aye. I'm sorry, I was reading and then I realized we're on the second one. Okay.
Resolution number 2021-12. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Waste Connections of Florida Inc. to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of waste in the City of Apopka, Florida pursuant to City of Apopka Code of Ordinances, Chapter 58, Article 3, providing for the term of years for the franchise, providing for franchise fee, and providing for an effective date.
Jeff?
The only difference is we changed the names to protect the innocent.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-12. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution number 2021-13.
Okay. Resolution number 2021-13. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Action Recycling LLC to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of waste in the City of Apopka, Florida pursuant to City of Apopka Code of Ordinances, Chapter 58, Article 3, providing for the term of years for the franchise, providing for franchise fee, and providing for an effective date.
Jeff?
I had a quote from Commissioner Velasquez a couple of minutes ago. Ditto.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-13. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Resolution 2021-14.
Resolution number 2021-14. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non-add-valorem tax assessment role for the Avion Point Development subdivision, providing for direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Chuck Vabrik, City Staff?
Yeah, before he comes up, just want everybody to remember that what we're doing now, all the new subdivisions going into Apopka, that we're having them have their own streetlight assessment so that the city, as we continue to grow, we kept paying for more and more streetlights, which was eating into our streets budget. And so by having these neighborhoods pay for their own streetlights within their neighborhood, it will free up dollars for roads. So just so everybody knows, the next four or five of these will be exactly that, is to, you know, so that we're not on the hook for the neighborhood's streetlights and that we can then allocate those dollars toward other, you know, ulterior streets or roads. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Chuck Vabrik, City Staff. What you have before you is a resolution to set the final rate for providing streetlighting in the Avion Point Development. As you may remember, the City Council established the MSBUs for this area back in late 2020 at the request of the developer in accordance with state statute. In keeping with the statute, the council must now establish the assessment rate, which will appear on the property owner's trim notice. In accordance with state statute, a notice of the public hearing was advertised in the local newspaper, and the property owners were sent notice by first-class mail. I'm asking council to adopt the rate as proposed for the first hearing and hold over for a second hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. The rate for the Avion Point for council approval is $356 per year. This particular development is a leased-owned development, which means that the property is going to be owned by one individual property management company. So those fees will most likely appear within the rental fees that are charged to the individual property renters.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Vabrik? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-14. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson? Second by Commissioner Smith? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-15.
Resolution number 2021-15. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non-add-valorem tax assessment role for the Bridle Path Development subdivision, providing for direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and for providing for an effective date.
Again, this is establishing the rate for the Bridle Path subdevelopment. Their proposed rate for the annual fee for the streetlights is $188. They were sent notice by first-class mail as well as advertised in the newspaper of the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Vabrik? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-15. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-16.
Resolution number 2021-16. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non-add-valorem tax assessment role for the Oaks at Kelly Park, Phase 1 and 2 Development subdivision, providing direction to the Finance Director and certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
This is for the development of the Oaks at Kelly Park, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Committee Development is actually, has a Phase 3 that'll be coming before y'all at a future date, so we'll have to reevaluate this particular one. But at the current property count out there, the proposed rate is $126. They were notified by mail as well as advertised in the local newspaper.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Vabrik? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-16. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, 2021-17.
Resolution number 2021-17. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non-add-valorem tax assessment role for the Oak Point North Development subdivision, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
This is for the Oak Point subdevelopment. This is currently, the roads are being put in out there, so there's no streetlights as of yet. The developer is aware, they were notified by first-class mail as well as that was advertised in the local newspaper, and the proposed rate is $128 per parcel.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Vabrik? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-17. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-18.
Resolution number 2021-18. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non-add-valorem tax assessment role for the residences at Emerson Park Development subdivision, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
This is for the residents at Emerson Park. The property owner, which is currently the developer, has been notified by first-class mail as well as an advertisement was run in the local newspaper. This is a townhouse community and their proposed rate per parcel in the townhouse community will be $71 per parcel.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I'm coughing. I have something in my throat. I didn't hear the amount.
The amount is $71 per parcel.
Any questions for Mr. Vabrik? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-18. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Mayor, I have a, can I have a question real quick? So I just want to, because this has, we've been a long process to get to this point because it takes a while to get to this. I want to make it clear that these streetlight assessments will be in a special fund, so you will see they will be their own fund. They will have a fund so that we can make sure that each benefit unit is paying their cost. It'll also be very transparent, so that way if anybody, so we have all the information that we need to be able to show each property owner that the benefit they're getting is the dollar that they're paying, it's going only there. And the other thing that I want to make clear is, we are going to put a site on, a page on our website that has this breakdown. So for each assessment, so it'll be an assessment tab that we're kind of looking at on our website so that the homeowner for those areas could go in and look to see exactly what their costs are. Since this is an assessment, this is not, you know, like, these revenues can only be spent on this purpose. We want to make sure that we're transparent, so there will be a special page for these since they're a direct benefit to those property owners.
Thank you, Edward. Okay. Next up, resolution 2021-19.
Resolution number 2021-19. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director for the City of Apopka, resolution 2021-19. This budget amendment includes changes in funding and appropriations related to the Florida Recreation Development and System Program grant for the Recreation Department. This grant was accepted during the September 9, 2020 City Council meeting for the new construction of a playground and renovations to the surrounding park facilities. This amendment assigns funds for grant expenditures that will be reimbursed by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Gladimir? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-19. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker? Second by Commissioner Bankson? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports. Commissioner Velasquez?
Can you just give me a moment and go down, just so I can get this tickle that's in my throat.
Commissioner Bankson?
Yeah, of course, we had Tom Terry at the event the other day for the chamber. That was really enlightening. I think there's 17 storms that they're projecting this year. Yay. I'm glad that we're in good shape with reserves, be able to handle anything that comes our way. And, but it was just a great meeting. And of course, the mayor's prayer breakfast is tomorrow. Really looking forward to that. It's the national day of prayer and we're alongside of that. We do this annually, but again, also at noon, but you'll hit those things, so I won't steal your thunder.
Yes. Commissioner Smith?
I haven't anything for this meeting.
Good. Okay. Mr. Becker?
I'm good.
Good. Commissioner Velasquez?
Okay. I'm so sorry, I have this tickle all of a sudden that just came. Just want to kind of, you know, not only did we have the breakfast and learned with Tom Terry, which was interesting, preparing us for the hurricane, we had the Saturday night sounds again, because I've been going to them every Saturday. We had a good turnout, it was a great band. We're almost coming to the end of it, so I just want our residents to know that they just have, I think, what, three more Saturdays? Three more Saturdays? And please come out and support them. I think it's a great event for our community. And I'll just hold off until the mayor's report when he talks about some of the meetings that we've, that I've attended regarding the Rock Springs Ridge update and the Northwest Recreation meeting update. So I'll hold off until you present your.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Edward?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Before you, this afternoon, you have the financial update. We've completed another month, come to another month. We're seven months into our fiscal year with collections as they relate to sales tax. As you can see, that the April number, keep in mind, the April number is February collections. So we're always a couple of months behind when we get, based on the collections. But you can see, when you do the comparison between last year and this year, we were 27% last month, we're 19% this month, little bit of a, that's a little positive news. Again, the month-to-month number's not so critical as the overall number, which as you can see from, on the overall number, when you kind of normalize the revenue, if you will, we're still about $878,000 or $876,000 or almost 9% lower than what we've actually, what the state told us that we would collect. So keep that in mind as you go. And granted, we still have, you know, five months to go. And as the comparisons come up for each month, we're going to start seeing, you know, where we got the hit last year. So this next revenue that we got, that we get in May, which will be actually March's collections, we get to kind of conceive, we're going to kind of see the comparison between where we were last March versus this March, which kind of can be some interesting information as well. But keep that in mind, you know, as we continue to watch these, watch this revenue. And then I just have a few more things that I want to mention to you. The, and you've probably seen it, we had an issue come up at Kitle and Nelson Park, the bathrooms, where we've had bats taking over, take over the, some of the roof in there, some of the attic or whatever. And so we've jumped on that real quick. We found it. Joe and his crew found it. And so we've had to close that. We're hoping to, you know, while they do the repair, get the bats out of there, do the repair. So we're trying to get all that cleaned up and done as quickly as possible. We're hoping that before, by June 1st, that we'll have all that cleaned up and ready to go. So.
So we didn't put those there to deal with mosquitoes?
No. These got in there and did some damage. And so when we, we thought we just had a little roof damage. Ah, we can fix this roof damage a little bit on the edge or whatever, but when they got in there, it was like the rats had, I mean, the, sorry, the bats had decided to set up shop. And so we're getting that cleaned up and get that all put back and then so that our restrooms will be, our facility and our restrooms will be good there. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the chiller has finally, looks like the chiller's going to be coming, the chiller will be here next weekend. They will be installing the new chiller on City Hall. Been a long time coming, I know, but finally had to be ordered because it's such a big piece or whatever. And so that should be, we should have, having that installed next weekend. So hopefully, we'll have all that up and tweaked and everything before summer gets here. Because we don't, the last thing we want is to be.
What are we having put here?
A chiller, a new chiller, air conditioning, chiller for the, yeah, for the city. So wanted to let you know that, just so you know. The other thing I wanted to let you know, I've been working with Florida League of Cities on the American Rescue Act dollars. So I had a conversation with them this week. They're saying that the U.S. Department of Treasury has to have all of the instructions, guidance, how the money can be spent is due by May the 10th. So, but, but again, I'm not holding my breath. But again, they're waiting for the U.S. Treasury to give out the directions. And once the U.S. Treasury gives out the directions, we'll have that, we can share that, we'll know what we can do with those dollars, when we'll get the dollars maybe. And it'll be good to have all that as we move through the up-and-coming budget process so that we can make sure that those are. I've heard some stories, and you probably have too, that people have already figured out how to use it, how to spend it. There's been no guidance and no direction. The U.S., the Florida League of Cities says the direction will come from the U.S. Treasury on how it can be spent. So hopefully we'll know next week on that. And then the only other thing I have is I've been talking with a county, and the county has, as you know, because you guys, I think, have been receiving some emails about the retail pet store.
Oh, my God.
Issue that they've got going on. So what, what they're going to do, the county on May the 11th is going to hear kind of a workshop, if you will. They've got a couple ordinances, one that completely bans puppy mills, as they call it, or retail sales, and one that kind of grandfather's in the existing ones, but doesn't allow any future ones. Again, it's just a workshop they're hearing, or that they're going to hear. I heard they're not really, they're not going to take up an ordinance until a future meeting based on those, those meetings. But one, one of the interesting things is, and then I kind of wanted to kind of get your, your feelings, is they're talking about if they, do they apply this ordinance, that they're going to apply this ordinance countywide, so that, you know, as you know, they are, they have animal services, kind of like they want to put under the umbrella of their animal services. If they do it, they regulate animal services, so they would, you know, would, would send that down and regulate this retail pet stores. I want, try to give you all the information I have. We have one currently in the city limits that is, that would, could be affected. They are the one, and I'm, I don't know if you're familiar with them or not, but they are the one that is called, is our Pet World on Cimarron, in Cimarron Commerce, if you will, you know, and sure, you kind of know where that's at. They're by the, across from the racetrack right there. So that's the only one that they're showing in our city limits. There's been three, three cities, Belle Isle, Edgewood, and Winter Park have all, they have no issues. They're, they have responded back to the county, and they're okay with letting the county, you know, regulate it going forward if that's their wishes. So I think that's all the information I had. I wanted to give you that information so you have that, to see if there are any concerns or issues, but I wanted you to have all of that as they work through their work session on May the 11th.
I've lent my name to that letter that they have. I fully agree with what they're trying to accomplish, and I, in all honesty, I think if they grandfather in some of these establishments, it creates an unintended consequence because you could, you, you have a business that has now a green light to do what they want to with those puppy sales. And talking with the Humane Society of, you know, those members that had contacted me, only four percent of puppy sales come by way of these retail establishments anyhow, and those that have gone away from that model can still run a reputable business by selling, you know, supplies, food, things like that. So I've lent my voice to say I would support the ordinance that it's altogether away.
And I've done the same.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Edward?
I think, nope, that's all, well, only, I will mention real quick, budget time is apprope, is approaching, and so I've met with a couple of you. I've got a couple more to get with to set the dates. So I will have the dates, we'll have the dates by the next meeting to be able to announce the workshop dates and the public hearing dates for the fiscal year 22 budget workshop and public hearings. That's all I have.
Has any of the departments or unit heads have already met with, for budget, like, reviewed budget?
They're.
Before they come to us? Has that been done?
They have not, currently they are putting them together, Commissioner, as we, as we speak. We had a deadline of last week, but we've had a lot going on, so they're, they need a little more time to put their budgets together. So the departments are currently putting their budgets together.
Right.
And then they will sit down with me and the mayor from, from the administrative standpoint as step one, as we put everything into the budget, because they prepare theirs by the, individually. We put them into the overall budget so that we have all of the information. And then on June 1st is when we get the estimated, or when we get the property tax number, that's when we'll know the, the values of the property tax, so we can start putting the revenues together so that we have both pieces, and then the work sessions will bring all of it. I'll bring you every, everything at that time.
Okay. So right now, no one's had meetings regarding the budget?
Only within their departments.
Only within their departments.
So they're meeting within their departments and putting all of their budgets together and all of their wish lists, everything, they're putting everything together, and then you'll, when we have the budget work sessions, you'll get those, those whole, those, all those packets.
Okay.
With the revenues.
When the departments come to head, come together to meet with you and the mayor, the Finance Department is not a part of that meeting?
They are part of that meeting.
Okay.
The Finance Department, they have their own budget, but they will be part of that meeting as well, usually when we meet, we, and, and what we've done is, is in the departments where we have overlap, we try to include people, someone in that as well. For example, facilities. Facilities touches several other departments. We try to make sure that when we meet, that we have who's doing the responsibility, so we don't have budget in both areas for the same item. So those kind of people, those, that's how we do it when they'll be at the table. Anybody that's affected by that will be, will be in those meetings.
Is it possible to get a, because Jamie was doing it before she left, quarterly expense progression, where we're at today in the fiscal year?
Yes, we can get you that.
If half a year, if half a year, because we're in the middle of Q3, so half, first half of the year.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Yeah. Good, good, good thought.
That'll be good to have, seeing where we are.
Yeah, one of the things, the kind of way we've, we've done it is we, we do a continuation budget, which means same services, same, you know, just maintenance, you know, and all that, and then, then they have the wish list, and we kind of go through there and we help, we, we'll go through as far as prioritizing the, the wish list on top of the, the continuation budget, so, which, you know, would include the raises and all that, but, but those will be, and anything above that would, would, you know, will start to, to prioritize those and bring it back to, to you at a later date.
So when will the commissioners put their budget together?
Whenever you.
Commissioner, commissioners, you're more than welcome to send me any, any requests that you have. If there are some requests or things that you have, training, I know, you know, you have your discretionary council or whatever, but if there are training things or things like that, that, that you would like to submit, absolutely. If not, it's, as Mayor said, we treat those funds as the same as last year, continuing going forward, but if there's some changes or things you'd like to see in there, that, do let me know.
All right. Michael?
Nothing to report, aside from it's just autonomy. It's, I've already been here now one year. My one-year anniversary is coming up, so here's to the first year and another year going forward, heading towards the forty years you want me to be here, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Last but not least, couple things. Let's see, Rock Springs Ridge report, I guess everybody got the, the minutes, which goes over a lot of what we, we, we talked about at the community meeting out at the, the amphitheater. Gosh, I would say we probably had four hundred, four fifty, so it was a great crowd, great turnout, a lot of great questions asked. I will let you know that we're meeting, I know Susan and Victoria are going down tomorrow to meet with Bill Cowles, because we're looking to try to figure out how we do get the vote for the, the residents. And so it's a, there's a lot of mixed information in the statutes, and one of the things I asked Bill Cowles and his team to try to help us is clean it up, because there are different, there's different ways people can vote, and, and they need to be a lot more clear than they are. But what we're hoping to do is, Bill Cowles' office, we should have a price tomorrow on what he thinks it would cost to do an election for us based on thirteen-hundred-and-twenty homes, which include posted and everything, because we, I'd rather him do that, you know, so we, the, so there's no, no doubt about the integrity of the election as to, you know, what we want to do. So what we, what we need to do is in the next couple of weeks, a lot of the questions you've got, we'll need to, Roger, we'll need to put together and, and put those out, because what I would like to do is have a, you know, and we'll bring it to City Council, and at that point, then we'll have Bill Cowles put together the election for us. Those questions, we'll need to try to get those answered between now and, and that time. So I think by the next commission meeting, we should be able to try to answer most of those questions as far as who's paying for what and when. As to the, I mean, the, the big philosophical question which you brought up on Rock Springs Ridge is the, the amount of property or amount of dollars. You're more than willing to say, listen, we're not willing to do that. We're not willing to give them, or, you know, to pay, pay two-point-four million, and, and it's obviously within, you know, it's, it's for Rock Springs Ridge to decide, you know, and, you know, we can let the chips fall where they may. That's just, so that's obviously, and I've, I've, I've really got no dog in that hunt, so it's, it's up to the, to the, the folks that live at Rock Springs Ridge, is it worth gambling he'll take one-point-eight or two-point-two or whatever the number is? And I'm completely fine with whatever y'all, you know, whatever y'all decide. So that's, that will be for, for the Rock Springs Ridge people to decide, not, not the city. So I think, you know, those are the things we're looking at. We've got a couple recreational districts. I've got phone calls in, should have some, some information from them. There's a big one down in Manatee County that's, that's only about, that's about three years young, so they've got some, as far as how they set it up and then how it's been running a recreational district. But it looks like we'll have some more information from a bank that if you didn't want to go the recreational district route, that you could, the HOA could borrow the money. You don't need to go to recreational district, and there's pros and cons to that. I think the, the proto-recreational districts, recreational district, it's a lot more structured. It's, it's, it's basically a subset of our, the city government. I mean, so it's, it's a lot more teeth in how those, everything gets done, elections, budgets and all that, whereas an HOA is a lot more informal, and that's the question for how the residents want to do it. To do it as an HOA, you could get it done faster. It would be less attorney fees probably to, to do an HOA buyout versus a, a recreational district, but that will be also for the members to decide. I think that's about all, you know, we, within two weeks, we should have some pretty good, you know, should be able to have a pretty good discussion on where we are with everything, and, and then we'll, we'll look for, for some recommendations from the Rock Springs Ridge residents.
I think what most of the Rock Springs Ridge residents that have reached out to me have been that they don't have anything showing what it would cost. I mean, the, we know what the land is costing us.
Right.
And I do talk us, because I am a Rock Springs Ridge resident, but right after that meeting, I, I did get some phone calls, and, and actually now, when I walk out of the house and anybody that's traveling sees me, they stop and they share their concerns. And their concern is, you know, the cleanup, you know, the environmental, the, the state of the property, the maintenance of the property, certainly, you know, the trees have been neglected for so many years. There's just, the cost itself, besides the, what the property is going to be swapped for, is the real concern. You know, our HOA, the, the fees that, that each resident pays is less than five-hundred dollars. We have a, you know, we have, you know, revenue there, but the agreement where, you know, you had talked about the six-thousand a month to lease from the city, if it was either twenty years or thirty years, and by the time they get to that point, there's, there's a lot of concern where a lot of the residents feel they don't understand the cost of owning the golf course. And that's something that, you know, I want to be able to at least assure them. It's not just the one-hundred-and-twenty dollars or the one-hundred-and-thirty dollars that may be on their tax bill, it's everything else, because the, I mean, I've had one resident say, he's owned it and he couldn't take care of it, and he could afford to take care of it. Where does that leave us?
Well, it means, and we can, I can, I can sure reach out to Del Russo. I know Michael's been talking with their attorney. We can find out what they've been spending on, on maintenance. Obviously, it's not been a lot, that's for sure, but I mean, one of the things that they said, that the tavern said, that basically the, the rent that they're paying, according to them, has paid for the maintenance of the property. Now, is it to your standards? Probably not, but that, that was, that was mentioned at the community meeting last week.
I just think they want just some more clarity on what is really the real cost of owning the golf course.
Well, I think that will be, I mean, that, that will be for you to, I mean, depending on what you do with it, I mean, if you, if you, obviously if you put a golf course in, it, it's one set of numbers. If you leave it very, very primitive, it's a lesser number, the le, the least amount, and then if it's somewhere in between where you've got walking pass and all that, that would be a number somewhere in the middle. So I, I don't know that I want to get in the weeds. What would you say, Michael?
I think those are figures that if there's any potential, either the HOA wanting a desire to take over the course, or recreational district to get together to then kind of advise themselves, or what is it, what's their course of action? I think this is a, this is kind of an obligation or an onus that falls on the residents to determine what's their, their course of action. Golf course, recreational area, conservation area, and then at that point, they can begin to allocate what their costs are, because in the end, titles transferred to either an HOA or to a recreation district, those costs, that administration, that management falls on them, not on the city.
All right. So the, the other question that was presented to me, and I didn't have an answer, and I don't like having not an answer for them, was who initiated this land swap? I mean, whose idea was it that Rock Springs Ridge would get into this?
The attorney for Del Russo. Well, I don't, I, I'm attorney or Chad Barham, who's, who's Del Russo's partner. I can't remember which one. Might have been, Michael, who was it? Chad?
I can't, they had several proposals thrown out, and then it's when they, they threw out, well, what if we got a land swap? Do you got any properties that we can swap?
Okay, so somewhere I had read in the social media, and I, I think I did ask you that, or I asked Ed, somewhere they said we had three-hundred-and-one lots. The city owns three-hundred-and-one lots, and I think someone said to me, could be lift stations.
Well, if, if you're generally speaking, how many lots the city owns?
The city property, I'm sorry.
City properties.
Three-hundred-and-one property, city properties.
Right. That could be anything from a lift station to a park to a vacant lot to City Hall is a lot we own, so.
So the only, the two properties on Harmon were the only ones that we have appraised? I mean, how did, how did Del Russo?
They already knew it. I mean, I, you know, they.
You know, say, all right, we'll do a land swap and let me swap with those two properties.
Well, we also had, when we talked about Camp Weewah, we talked about Camp Weewah, that was the two properties we talked about selling, so they knew we, so that's, and we already had the appraisals on those two properties.
Okay. So there was no other properties that we could swap with them?
Well, we've got the, you know, the property we've just done with, on Sandpiper, but we've already got a contract on that. We've got a contract on the airport. Do we have other lands? I guess. I mean, I don't know where, but.
It would be, without speaking for Del Russo, I mean, any swap is going to necessarily try to be what, whether they, I mean, they're, they're not going to swap us a golf course for, you know, submerged lands or lands that aren't going to be developable. So any type of land swap is going to have to incorporate some type of, that they can retain certain development rights or, or ability to seek additional development rights on properties that they currently possess with the land that they have.
And, and the other questions, I mean, I have, I have slew, but I see that he's, he's moving forward, we're going to Bill Cowles' office, but we haven't had an assessment of the property or an environmental, you know, assessment of it. I mean, there's, what's the process? I mean, we're just going to present to our residents, do you want it or not want it? And, and then we worry about, you know, the possible problems or the challenges that we're going to have once we have it?
I, I, I think we're, we're going to have to kind of compartmentalize what are the things that need to be done in order to effectuate a land swap. I mean, our discussions with the supervisor of elections are both kind of twofold based on either A, how if an election is going to be held in order for them to even approve the creation of a recreation district, the way the statute is written, there's two options for the creation of the district. One is that the residents, and the statute in this language is clear, it's the residents within the proposed district vote on an ordinance. So it basically becomes like a ballot question.
Right.
And you're hereby, hereby you're voting on the ordinance whether to pass or decline this ordinance to create the recreational district. The other option, which is outside of an election, is that the majority of the residents within the proposed district sign a petition and present that petition to the city council. At that point, with the majority of the residents petitioning for the creation of a district, then this council will, will prepare and pass the ordinance creating the district. Now you hit phase two, which the district has two forms of governance.[1722.53] Now you hit phase two, which the district has two forms of governance. Either A, the city council governs the recreation district, or B, a board of supervisors is created to administer and govern the district. In order for there to be a proper election of a board of supervisors, that will, that is either, that is to be then determined by the ordinance, which acts as the charter for the district. Either the residents, the majority of the residents vote for the board of, well, the board of supervisors, the eligible voters are either the residents within the district, or the property owners within the district. But that's then determined by the language in its charter, part of the ordinance. Administering that election could then be done by the supervisor elections, and it would just become another question on your ballot when you're voting. When you go to vote for city council, county commissioner, any other ballot issues, there's going to be then a line there for board of supervisors for the Rock Springs Ridge recreational district. And if the, if it's administered by the supervisor elections, there are certain costs, there are certain benefits by elections being handled by the supervisor elections, as opposed to a property manager who would create another category for elections within the homeowners' association. But once you create a district, you're going to create a separation between a homeowners' association governed by Chapter 720 of Florida statutes, and a recreation district, which is governed by, I would get my number right, by Chapter 418 Florida statutes. Also, it's important to note, a recreation district is subject to the Florida Sunshine laws and the public records laws. Homeowners' associations under Chapter 20 are not.
But I'm talking about now assessing the property?
It's going to come down to what it's going to be, what the actual costs are. But then, the maintain, if you're talking about assessment for maintenance, that's a determination then to be done by the board of supervisors.
City pop, what I mean to do with that?
They become, they, the city will be involved in trying to get a cost for whatever, whether it's the HOA, or the board, or the recreation district, to acquire the land. Once they acquire title, then it becomes, the onus is on either the HOA, or the, or the district, whoever, whatever legal entity is created to manage the property, then it's on them. It's their budgeting, they determine, they can go out and get their bids, figure out what's, what their costs are. But it becomes a matter for them, not a matter for the city.
Same thing you've got now. You're taking care of all the right of ways, and you're taking care of, of...
Well, we're, the HOA is responsible for that.
Right, right.
So the other question is, which a few neighbors have asked, if we do nothing, and I think I've asked Ed that question, I think I've asked you, and you've given me an answer, so, because this is a public hearing, and I do know that there are some residents tuning into this, what would happen?
Okay. If by "we" you mean "we" the city, the collective "we," the city council?
We, the city, do nothing. Well, even, even if Rock Springs Ridge, the residents decide, we don't want to, we don't want to own the golf course, we're going to leave it as is, what happens?
So at that point, the onus falls on Del Russo's group to determine what it is that they wish to do. And at this point, everything here is hypothetical. In theory, A, they can come in and apply for a land use amendment to increase the density of their property, in order to prepare for future development. They can come in and request an amendment to the plan development agreement, to increase the number of lots to be built. And then they would come in, get the, if approved, if the land use amendment and the amendment to the plan development are approved, they would then come in and submit site plans, and determine how many lots. If they elect to do, to not, I mean, in theory, they can elect not to ask for an amendment to the land use app, they can not ask for a development agreement amendment, based on what is the approved number of lots in the Third Amendment to the PUD agreement. I think that listed the number of approved lots at 1,337. By our calculations, 1,320 lots have been built, which gives them approximately 100, sorry, 17. 17 lots that are still vested under the, under the agreement, which can be built. The developer would have the option of coming in and doing a plat to create the 17 lots. Those lots can be shaped however he wants, because there's, it's 17 lots. He has 300 acres. He can, in theory, come up with one acre lots, half acre lots, or maximize the size of the lot and build houses on huge lots. 17. And that would come in as a plat, a subdivision, basically be creating a subdivision within your subdivision, and matching the number of lots that he would be entitled to under the development agreement, which is 7, which by our calculations is 17. That would, that can probably be done without a zoning change, and without a land use amendment.
So that's all he has right now, is that he can build 17 lots? And it has to be comparable and consistent with what's already built in Rock Springs Ridge? And then, that would be a separate HOA that he would have to establish?
Not necessarily. He wouldn't necessarily have to establish. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to speak for him, I'm not, I don't want to be his attorney.
Well, he wouldn't, it wouldn't, those lots and those homes would not be part of the current HOA?
No. Legally, based on your declarations, because the golf course is currently not, is not association, I don't think the golf course gets assessed association assessments. Therefore, those 17 lots would not become a member of your association unless they were to petition to become. But then, that's outside of the purview of the city. That is a private matter between the developer and the HOA.
So, any other questions for, for Michael?
Well, I just have two. And the first question is, I think we put in the cock before the horse. At what point does the homeowners association of Rock Springs Ridge vote to even enter into this agreement?
Well, then, talking to Bill Cowell, he could probably put something together in the next 60 days.
Well, or it's, or the HOA, I mean, it could be outside of the HOA's, again, a lot of this is hypothetical, because it, based on the statute, the residents themselves can, the residents themselves can organize a petition drive, prepare a petition, and if a majority of the residents within the proposed boundaries of the, of the district, and the district's boundaries are going to coincide with the boundaries of the plan development agreement. If a majority of the residents, and by residents, those people that reside within the boundaries, present to the city a petition asking to create a recreational district, then that process has begun.
No, I'm talking about even before the recreation district, simply to do the land swap deal. When would that vote take place, that the residents from Rock Springs, that we agree to enter an agreement with the city to do the land swap?
I think that onus will be on the, on the residents themselves.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. Who's, who's responsible for doing that? When would that take place?
That, it's not, it's...
I mean, because we don't even know at this point if Rock Springs Ridge wants to enter into this agreement. So when would that vote take place?
Like, well, even, even to get to the petition, let's just start from scratch here. If you're saying that there could be a petition drive to say, hey, I just need to have the majority of my ownership in my neighborhood to create this district. If you're saying that's the most basic way to do it, how are, how is the city equipping, it kind of goes to Roger's point, how is the city educating those people on how to put ink on paper? Meaning, yeah, the 2.5 numbers out there, but what are the, what are the details? What's the actual cost of maintenance? What's the appraised value of the current golf course property? All that stuff that people need to make an informed decision, how does that get out, out to the Rock Springs Ridge residents?
I think that's going to have to probably fall, I mean, I would advise that that's going to have to fall on the Rock Springs Ridge residents to take the lead, in order to determine. I know that about a year ago, this board voted on creating an advisory for Arrol Estates, an advisory committee that would take a look into if a recreation district is created, then what's it going to entail? What is the responsibilities of this district? Are we going to acquire property? Are we simply going to maintain what we have? Are we going to improve? But that onus is going to fall on the residents. If we, if, if there's a quorum of residents, or a group of residents that just do not want to get involved in this, at this point, then, then at this point, the city, they don't want the city to get involved, there's, there's not a consensus for resident ownership or acquisition of the golf course, then we're back to square one. As far as the city is concerned, we would have to review any application that the property owner, in this case, Del Russo, would submit to us, just like any other property owner, any other developer in the city. It's on us to review it, and depending on what the contents of the application are, whether it meets the, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and is consistent with our land development code. But if there is no action, or any, any onus on the part of the residents for action one way or another, then, I mean, it's, I would advise the city, if one party doesn't want to be part of the negotiations, there's really no point in there being one-way negotiations here, or us negotiating with ourselves.
Yeah, so I was wondering, so when is that vote going to take place, to find out if those residents want to be?
Within the next 60 days.
Oh, okay, within the next 60 days.
And to everybody's point, listen, this is not the kind of deal I would have made. I would rather have just, Rock Springs Ridge residents figure out a price with Del Russo kept us out of this thing, because, you know, obviously, it's not the way I want it, and I kept saying, why do you not just want cash? I mean, whatever that cash number is, why don't you just go to Rock Springs Ridge and say what you, what you'd accept? No, we think we can get more of our money back if we got developable land. It doesn't make any sense to me, but that's, I question why.
Then, my second question is, assuming that we entered into this agreement with the city with the land swap, and decide to do the residential recreational district, and attempt to get a bond, it's been said that it doesn't matter what the golf course appraised at, that we should get a bond for the 2.4 million dollars regardless of what the golf course appraised at. Is that a fact? And then if we choose not to do the bond, and do a traditional bank loan, where the bank loaned us 2.4 million dollars for a golf course that's only worth 1.2 million dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, Will?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I talked to the, and I've got a meeting with her next week, I talked with a banker, can't even tell you the name of the bank, but anyway, she's, I'll meet with her next week. She said, as long as they've got some things they have to put into your HOA bylaws that, that gives her the comfort to be able to loan the money. I said, so it doesn't, ask that question, said, does it matter? Said, if they do this, if the HOA does this, then yes, we can loan them the money. So, yeah, it's, I know, I know, I...
Those are two questions I have.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Becker, you got anything else on that one?
Okay.
Mr. Banksen?
So, but I think, to the point, I think Rogers and also Commissioner Velasquez, I think a lot of this is for y'all to do due diligence. I mean, that's not for the city to worry how much it costs to maintain it, because at some point, you've got to figure out what you're going to do with it. And that, you know, I think, the only question we're trying to answer today is, does, do the residents of Rock Springs Ridge want to buy it and pay back the city the 2.485 million dollars that, that the appraised value for the property that we were swapping? I mean, that's kind of the, I mean, everything else is, is for the residents. Soon as we get that done, then we, you know, we, we get you to the point where you set up a steering committee, whatever you want to call it, and you, and you, it's yours to take it either direction, either let the HOA just handle it just as an additional function, or do you set up a recreational district to give you more teeth and more standards that you, that have to be met to do those kind of things, so...
Okay. So my third question then is, we entered into this agreement, it's going to take us two years to get the recreational district, or to find the loan to pay, pay the 2.4 million dollars. In the meantime, we're paying the city $6,000 a month lease.
Right.
What percentage of that lease goes towards the principal?
Whatever y'all want, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, kind of just got that number out there. I mean, I was just, I was thinking, if you took 3% of the 2.4, that's what 6,000 a month comes out to. So it wasn't, I, I mean, this is back the napkin kind of things to bring to you, you know, as a, I mean, Rock Springs Ridge is obviously an important community, but I have to look out for the city. I mean, the city, you know, if, could the city get 3% on its money? Maybe, maybe not. Can you get a loan for, you know, the numbers I put in those, in those, the documents for last week was 3.5% loan? So, you know, all of that's kind of, I won't say negotiable, but I, you know, whatever the market will bear on, on not only the loan, or the bond, but on the, you know, whatever we could get, probably can't get 3%, probably only get 1% or 2%. So it, you know, and if it's just an interest only, I mean, that would be fine. I just, I just, I have to protect the other, you know, you know, 50,000 residents we've got, you know, in the city of Apocia. Okay, have we?
So, the other, just one more question, and I, because I mean, I'm getting a lot of questions. You have been meeting on a regular basis with some of the members of the HOA, and some community members.
Yes.
And so they, they come back and they kind of talk to each other. And so one of the things that is of concern is that, I know that they have requested some records, or minutes of all these meetings, and that's been a concern. Because, you know, we, well, I'm saying "we," but I keep hearing, oh, the mayor had a meeting with the HOA board, and the attorneys, and some of the residents, a group of residents, and they say, do you know what that meeting was about? Do you know if there's minutes? So that's another concern. How many meetings have you had with, within the community? Because a lot of them don't know that they've, that these meetings have been taking place.
I can't tell you how many, a lot.
Okay.
I've had from, from three to 20. I mean, I've had a lot of meetings. So I, you know, I don't, and it's just like, you can have, you can have the same meeting, you know, anybody, you know, any...
First of all, no, I haven't had meetings with...
No, I'm saying, but you can. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the problem is with Sunshine, and I'm happy, and think would probably be appropriate that we have one more community meeting, we kind of get everything laid out, that we've got times and dates, and, and, you know, if you guys want to come together with some numbers as far as, you know, the maintenance, is it currently stand, you know, whatever. So I'm thinking the next two to four weeks, we'll have another meeting, based on some of the things that we get, we learn from Bill Cowell's office. So be happy to have another meeting, which, which obviously, we'd sunshine it, make sure that, you know, all the commissioners are invited.
Okay.
Okay?
That would be fair. Thank you.
Cool. Okay. Next up, Camp Weewah, no updates, but it's interesting, I don't know if you've seen the, in the paper, I guess a couple of days ago, there's a, there's a lawsuit, you know, the county passed an ordinance last year that gives water bodies and animals some, I won't say voting rights, but gives them the ability to sue on their behalf. And so there was a, there was a piece of property that was just, now somebody's filed suit against the developer, because the property has got some wetlands on it. So it was interesting that, that it's now coming forward, that these, these rights are being challenged in court. As to the Northwest Rec community meeting, let's see here, I've got the numbers for you. Tier one, for things that people want Northwest, and this goes through the 14th, so we've got another, another week to go, but interesting bathrooms, number one, number one, number one. Which, you know, we've got the two going in, and we've got two more that we've kind of semi-approved with the Duke money for the amphitheater. What we're, what we're talking about doing is one at the top of the hill, which would also kind of help, there's some, a lot of these small soccer fields up there, so they could, they could use it as well as anybody going to the concert. One would be on the lower, if you're looking at the concert, at the stage, it'd be lower left, so people have a much closer access to a bathroom. So that was number one.
That's a big...
The second, second tier is an accessible playground, more fields, additional field lights, and a dog park. And then the last tier, the lowest tier, were courts and disc golf, so...
What kind of courts?
Tennis, basketball, pickleball, all that was in the third, third, third tier. So, and then on the, on the, on the fields, the smaller fields had a higher priority, so more, they wanted more little leagues, or softball fields versus a high school, you know, distance kind of a field. So, interesting, we've got a couple more days. I know if everybody's got a chance, if you haven't, you've got the map out front, we had, didn't have a great turnout, probably 30 or 40 people came out Saturday to put pins in the Northwest Rec map. But for anybody's out there, if you want to come in and put a pin, and the pins are for where you think these amenities should go. So we've got about seven or eight different pieces of property around the park that we can do additional things with. So if you, you know, let your friends, neighbors know that we've come down to City Hall, and we've got the map here to...
Which one of these tiers does the track fall under?
I think we had, we had two votes for the track, unless you, unless you're making it three.
Yeah, and I don't need to add to that.
Of course.
Yes. Oh, okay. Unionization update, the police completed their vote on April 28. The votes for no union were 38, the vote for union was 14. The fire department is now in the voting process, and the tabulation will be due on May 18. So, I think with that, that is it for me. So, Eric White, thank you for coming.
Okay.